(noise) reality or prejudice?
Of course, yeah.
Execute the office of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Execute the office of Board of Zoning Appeals.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
The Constitution and law of the state.
Thanks for you. Good sign. (inaudible).
(laughing).
Thank you. All right. Up next. Yeah, that's fine. I forgot what I'm doing.
(inaudible).
Thank you. Thank you, yes. Good night. We also have some recognition of service for years of service here from employees with the City of Hagerstown. I'd like to acknowledge three people who were not able to attend tonight. We have William Rice from the Parks Department. He served 30 years for the City of Hagerstown. John Semler from Utilities, the Wastewater Division. He served 39 years of service for the City of Hagerstown. And Brian Shank with Utilities, our Light Department, for 38 years of service. That is pretty incredible and I think speaks to the work atmosphere that we have here with the City of Hagerstown, that people come and they want to stay. Appreciate your years of service. And with us tonight, if you could just come up here and join me, Thomas Gladhill with Utilities, the Wastewater Division, for 46 years of service.
Wow.
Goodness.
Wow.
All right. (laughing). David Shriver, Utilities, Wastewater Division, 35 years of service.
(inaudible).
Great. Brian Thomas, Parks Department, 30 years of service. And, how do I say it? Michael Schauzer, Utilities, Light Department, 35 years of service. All right. Well, congratulations and I thank all of you.[621.12][621.12](applause). Up next, we have Citizen Comments. A couple of people signed up to speak. Up first, we have Elise Cohen. And if you could come up and state your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
All right. Elise Cohen, 3720 Green Valley Road, Iamsville, Maryland. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Elise Cohen. In fact, my family has been doing business in the City of Hagerstown for four generations. My great-grandfather owned and operated Fleischer's on this very block, so it's exciting for me to carry on that legacy. But this evening, I'm here to promote retail sports betting in the City of Hagerstown. In December, the State of Maryland awarded me a retail sports betting license for a restaurant location next to the Valley Mall. This is my second retail sports betting license that I have secured, Frederick being my first. And in fact, my location in Frederick is the only 100% woman-owned sports book in the USA. If approved, the City of Hagerstown could share that important distinction. While retail sports betting will bring both more jobs and patrons to the mall, it'll also add significant tax dollars which directly benefit the state education fund. In fact, a 15% tax is levied on all sports books for education. It's an incredible way to support our children, and Hagerstown could very much have a seat at that table. In conclusion, retail sports betting is a tremendous opportunity for the city and economic development. It provides jobs, funds our schools, and adds tourism. So I'm here for any comments, and I have pictures of what the proposed sports book would look like, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Elise. Next, we have Michael Staub. Mr. Staub, if you could come up and state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Michael Staub, 18 South Mulberry. This is the night you're leaving, so if I'm a little over, you'll have to throw me out.[752.41][752.41](laughing). I'd like to comment on one thing in general. I've been walking, walking. It's getting a lot better. The officers are sitting over on Cannon, that's helping. But I've noticed one thing talking to these homeless. They're being put out of buildings because of massive rent increases, and I know it happened in my building. Mine went up $100 overnight. Maybe somebody on this council or all of you might want to take a look, because I'm looking at all these condemned buildings, and there's a fine lady in the police department, Ashley, who jumped yesterday when I sent her a text of what was on East Antietam Street laying on the street. You all would have flipped had you saw what was laying on the street. It was very dangerous for the children, and I mean tell you, she jumped very quickly, and I have to commend her. I don't see her here, but she did a good job. Now, getting to you. I hate to see you leave. I'm going to tell you two things. I came to this city, it's a wonder I'm not in that jailhouse over there, but I meant it. Two people changed me with the city. One gentleman sitting back there shook my hand and brought me a red container for the needles, Captain Langston, and you gave me a hug. You were the second mayor that gave me a hug, Diane Feinstein, in San Francisco was the mayor gave me a big hug. You gave me several. I hate to see you go. I hope you don't forget us.
I won't.
I looked for you New Year's in the rain. I got sick because I came down there to find you.
I had to dance in that rain.
You've done a lot. You responded to me. I've given all of you H-E-L-L. I'm still going to come, but now I'm going to the commissioners. I'm going to get on them over what they did with the workers making us get on the payroll and taxing us. So they're next, but I really think you need to take a look at the rent, what's going on, because there's a lot of buildings that are condemned that, man, when I see what I'm seeing, maybe you ought to take a look, because someone's letting the ball down there. But I'm not going to say farewell to you. You're my friend. I consider you a friend. And one thing I have to say about you, you do show up when you need you, and I hope you like my fudge.
Thank you. Thank you.[901.37][901.37](applause). I packed your framed picture that you gave me up to take to my office in Annapolis, so you'll be there with me, too. Up next to speak, we have Jeremy Laeger. If you could come up, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Jeremy Laeger. I'm at 1-8250 Hurricane Court, and I'm here tonight to wish you farewell. When you became, when you ran for city council and you got on, we knew what you were about, protecting the citizen from opioid addiction, and biggest thing was, like the former person said, is showing up. That's the number one thing. You showed up in Annapolis, you show up in Washington, D.C., you show up at the White House, you show up for the president, and that's what people remember, talking about housing affordability. You and Mayor Day from Salisbury. I know that's the number one thing, is getting probably him to Hagerstown one day. So you're never going to forget Hagerstown, which that's the biggest accomplishment for us as citizens. But honestly, based on your path, we knew this was sooner or later going to happen, sooner or later, if the right person was in the governor's office. So we, it's sad to see you go, and you did a lot of good. Unfortunately, it's going to take several generations or several more mayors to get things really going in the right path, but we thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all we had signed up to speak today for Citizen Comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right.[995.12][995.12](laughing). Next, we have a public hearing for the 2022 Land Management Code amendments.
And Steve, before you start, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Bachmiller, Hagerstown City Zoning Administrator, 1 East Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. Good evening. We're here, as we are once every year, to update collectively the Land Management Code. We receive ideas, proposals, identify issues throughout the year, but for efficiency's sake, we put them together in a single package and bring them to you just once a year, so we only amend the code one time annually. And we have a smaller-than-usual package this year. That's a good thing. The Land Management Code, for those who are watching and wonder what the Land Management Code is, it's actually a consolidation of four previous standalone ordinances. They were the zoning ordinance, subdivision and land development ordinance, floodplain management ordinance, and forest conservation ordinance. Planning Commission accepted public comment on November 9th, and then they met on December 14th to determine what proposals to recommend to the mayor and city council, and forwards the package that we're discussing tonight for your consideration. And then you're holding this public meeting as well. I should also note that when you reviewed the package in workshop, you had concerns about one of the items. The Planning Commission did re-review that and provided amended text, which is part of the package that's here tonight. So the previously mentioned text is out, and sports book specifically is in the official proposal for this hearing. The proposals accepted by the mayor and council, with or without adjustments based on the results of this hearing, are enacted by adopting an ordinance to amend the code, which goes into effect 30 days after it's adopted. Process should be completed around April. There are 13 proposals this year. Six relax existing regulations. Three are corrections or clarifications to existing regulations, and four proposals either are new proposals or they strengthen existing regulations. And I'll go through them each briefly. In the first package, relaxing existing regulations. Item one, there's an amendment that permits solar farms in the POM, IR, and IG zoning districts on properties that are under Environmental Protection Agency or Maryland Department of the Environment Remediation Plans as a low-impact and low-traffic land use on problem sites. Ground-mounted solar collection system farms, such as proposed here, currently are not permitted in the city. This would provide essentially a regulatory exception to them, seeing that they don't involve getting too deep into the ground, and also don't generate a lot of traffic on these environmentally compromised sites. So we thought this is a good thing to add in those locations, and it would be limited strictly to properties under those conditions. It would not apply to all properties in those three zoning districts. Number two, it adds 13 permitted uses to the new institutional zoning district and adds visitor welcome centers as a permitted use in the CG and CR districts. If you'll remember, the INST district was created a year or two ago, and the initial list of permitted uses was included. And also, we'll be updating that in the next hearing that you have regarding adding some other properties to the INST district. The, what we found is that there are other districts now that the districts are in place where the uses are compatible with the intent of that district and should be added to the list of permitted uses in the INST district. Number three would be minor changes to provisions for wall signs in the commercial and industrial zoning districts. When buildings or units of 50 or linear feet or less in width, the maximum amount would increase by 25%. And for industrial buildings with more than 50 feet of frontage, it would increase by Proposal number four, add sports wagering facilities as defined, permitted, regulated, and licensed by the State of Maryland to the use chart, and it would permit them in the CCMU, City Center Mixed Use, and the CR Commercial Regional Zoning Districts. A business owner desires to introduce this use to a property in the CR district, and that's why it was considered and included in the package, and that is the information that you received from Ms. Cohen earlier this evening. Number five, it's an amendment that makes references to advertising and notice requirements in a map or text amendment case to the zoning ordinance or our Land Management Code consistent with state law. Nothing in this would prohibit the city from adopting additional expectations by policy, and it protects the case's legal sufficiency if applying those policies if they are accidentally Number six of the relaxing regulations, six changes the warehouse flex space from a special exception use in the POM, Planned Office Mixed Zoning District, to a permitted use. It substitutes performance standards for Board of Zoning Appeals review and permits larger amounts of warehouse use within a project when the site has direct access to a major collector or arterial roadway. The POM zoning district, in short, is essentially an office park zoning district. However, the flex space was added in recent years to widen the uses, but they wanted to make sure the warehouse did not take over essentially the industrial, excuse me, the office zoning area. But this will loosen it up a little bit. It sets performance standards, which will substitute for BZA review. Going on to the second batch, which are corrections and clarifications. Number seven clarifies and includes bees and beekeeping as a land use in the context of other animals kept for their production, for the production of their byproducts. It amends the definition of livestock by adding honey to the list of byproducts and bees to the list of animals included in the definition. This was suggested by the city attorney. We occasionally have this come up in enforcement cases. The existing language is legally sufficient, but the city attorney suggested to clarify it, so there's no argument at all whether or not beekeeping comes under the category of farming activity and livestock. Number eight, it clarifies the requirement regarding the distance an accessory structure must be from a principal building before it is considered not part of the principal structure. It states all parts of the accessory structure, including decks, eaves, and other elements, must be at least three feet from all parts of the principal structure. And then the last of the changes and clarifications, it makes a minor change to the requirements for a building to qualify as a possible conversion overlay district. There are conflicting points in that section. One requires the building to be at least two stories, and one that does not. Making it uniform at one story corrects this and makes more buildings potentially eligible for this adaptive reuse tool. And you'll be familiar with the Surrey School Conversion District that was approved recently to convert that building into a hotel. That's being done through this process, a conversion overlay. And then the last section, these are new and enhanced regulations, 10 through 13. Number 10 removes the industrial performance standards from the industrial district section of the zoning ordinance and places them in the supplementary regulation section. This will result in all industrial uses being subject to these performance standards, not just those in the industrial districts. Because these standards are listed in the industrial district section, they only apply to those uses subject to that particular section being the industrial zoning districts. In recent years, some of the changes have been made to the ordinance that kind of blurs the hard lines that used to exist between some of the districts, so some light industrial and such are permitted now in some of the commercial districts. But because the zoning district is a commercial or a mixed-use district, and this provision is in another section of the ordinance, they're not subject to it. So this would make all industrial uses uniformly subject to those standards. Number 11 proposes new regulations that govern the parking and storage of recreational vehicles and boats on residential properties. The zoning ordinance is quiet on this issue, but it is frequently addressed in other localities. RV affinity websites advise buyers to check with their local jurisdictions for any applicable regulations. So this is not a one-off kind of situation, because there are other jurisdictions that do regulate these things, and the industry is aware of that. Proposal number 12 requires a mix of housing when developing land in the NMU Neighborhood Mixed Use Zoning District. Apartments will be limited to 35%, and apartments and townhouses together would be limited to 50% of the total units in a development. However, it does exempt those apartments in mixed-use buildings in order to encourage the construction and development of mixed-use developments. The district encourages mixing of uses, and this provision prevents single-use high-density housing complexes. And then lastly, number 13 revises the parking regulations to discourage adding new driveway entrances to residential properties in front yards when access can be achieved from a side street or alley. Limiting driveways on streets and maximizing space for on-street parking, especially when alleys exist, is in the public interest. Also, the ordinance requires that new driveways and parking pads be paved. And that's the quick summary. The record typically after these hearings is left open for 10 days for additional written comment to be submitted, and then this body will, after that is passed, will gather at a future workshop and discuss how it wants to move forward with amending the ordinance. And assuming there's no unanticipated delays to the remainder of the process, the amendments should go into effect in late April or in May. And if anybody has any questions after this or in the coming days, they can contact me. My extension is 139, my zoning, oh, excuse me, my email address is sbachmiller@hagerstownmd.org. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
I have two questions.
And I have one. Go ahead. When you go back a couple slides to the driveways and, you know, adding driveways, would we not want to encourage pervious parking pads as opposed to impervious?
There's a difference between, it depends on how pervious it would be. If you used permeable pavers that have like holes in them, that would be good. This is designed to get away from gravel, which tendency has to migrate off of properties and into the streets and into the alleys, to get away from the use of gravel as a regular surface to drive across.
Hmm. Okay. That was my only question.
Kristen.
Same questions as last time. On page four, under sports wagering facilities?
Yes.
It says as defined by the State of Maryland?
Yes.
Are we going to, does that differentiate this type of facility from a casino?
It's my understanding that it does. They are defined separately in the ordinance, and I'm sure Mr. Staub can provide additional commentary on that.
Did you have another question? We did have one person signed up to speak today for public hearing testimony, Elise Cohen.
Elise Cohen, 3720 Green Valley Road, Iamsville, Maryland. Seems I gave my statement at the wrong time, so apologies, but I'm here again to champion retail sports betting in the City of Hagerstown as a huge driver of commerce, tourism, tax dollars, and I, once again, would like to reiterate that I am the only woman-owned sports book in the U.S. right now. sports book in the U.S. right now and it's a very exciting opportunity to bring to Hagerstown as well. So that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm here for any questions and I also have renderings, depictions of what the interior of the book would look like, or at least resemble, if you'd like to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was no one else signed up to speak for or against? Is there anyone else?
Question. Can I?
And to answer the previous question, it is not a casino. There are only five casinos in the state of Maryland that would require a constitutional amendment to add another casino. And so only sports gambling or sports betting could occur in my location. No other type of betting would be permissible.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I need to enter into the record the certification of the advertising in this hearing as required by law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll leave the record open for ten days and close this public hearing. We also have a public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive rezoning.
I just have some administrative things to do for the moment, so talk amongst yourselves.
All right, there we go.
Do you solemnly affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement is made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Creation of institutional areas, which then was going to result in an institutional zone. And so that comprehensive rezoning became effective July twenty-third, two thousand twenty. And then recently, we noticed that, I'm sorry, touched on that. We noticed that eight properties had inadvertently been left out of the institutional zoning that should have been rezoned. And so we decided we should bring forward another comprehensive rezoning to correct that issue. And since we were doing it, we decided we should add another, two properties that are being proposed for institutional uses so that the zoning would match. And there are also adjacent to other areas that have that zoning. And so that is what we're proposing tonight. We're calling it the INST Cleanup Comprehensive Rezoning. Ten properties with institutional uses are proposed institutional uses. The first, the Jonathan Hager Elementary School and Terrapin Park, they're both currently zoned residential moderate density. The proposal, of course, is to go to INST. Three-twenty-one Highland Avenue, one-fifteen Key Street, which is on the old Bach Oil property near City Park or adjacent to City Park, and it's proposed for an expansion of Washington County Museum of Fine Arts. And so the proposal is to rezone that from R Mod Residential Moderate Density to INST. Wheaton Park and four-sixty-five Pennsylvania Avenue, four-sixty-five Pennsylvania Avenue is the Old Coke Plant, which is owned by the Dillman Black Heritage Museum. It proposed for the, to be the new location for their collection. So they are, both of these areas are zoned RH, High Density Residential, and so the proposal is to rezone it to INST. Oswald Park and Woodland Way Park, also zoned residential moderate density, go to INST. The Roderick Cub of Long Meadow Park, rezoned from R Mod Residential Moderate Density to INST. That's also adjacent to some existing INST. Potomac Heights Elementary School, a portion, basically half of their property is in the city, the part with the actual building is outside the city. So this would rezone the portion of their property inside the city from R Mod to INST. And Kiwanis Park, which is in the Light Business Park adjacent to the Antietam Creek, rezone that from Professional Office Mix to INST. And then this is the map, it's a little hard to tell, but the darker blue on here are those ten properties proposed to be rezoned to INST. And one thing that the INST did is it demonstrates that there's not as much low-density residential zoning in the city as you might have thought because we had all of these very large institutional complexes with that zoning. And so this just makes it clear for, for land use studies that, that a lot of the land we thought was residential is not, it's institutional. And so the next step in the process is for a follow-up discussion at a February work session. And then if the mayor and council are ready, it could be introduced, introduction of the ordinance on February twenty-eighth to start the approval process. And that is all I have for you this evening. And we do have people in the audience representing the Museum of Fine Arts, sorry.
Do you guys have any questions?
All right. Before I disappear and forget, I'd like to enter into the record the planning commission's file by reference and the certification of advertisement for this hearing.
Thank you. And we don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against? Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right, go ahead and close this public hearing. All right, approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for approval of the minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, hereby I move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion car, carries?
Approval of an ordinance, conveyance of forty-three forty-seven West Washington Street.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for the approval of an ordinance to approve the property acquisition agreement for the conveyance of three hundred and fifty-one square feet of land at forty-three dash forty-seven West Washington Street to Blackthorne Capital Partners, BCB, BCP Property.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval of an ordinance to approve the purchase of a portion of that certain parcel of real property located at Hep Road, Hagerstown, Maryland, and an easement to and from said portion, authorizing execution and delivery of a property acquisition agreement by and among the city and Carroll Investments LLC, Margaret Harrison Holdings LLC, Frola LLC.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for the approval of an ordinance to purchase a portion of property known as parcel eight twenty-four on TM three seventeen, LIBRA four-two-eight-eight, Folio one twenty-eight, located on Hep Road, Hagerstown, Maryland, authorizing the execution and delivery of the attached property acquisition agreement between the city and Carroll Lee Investments LLC, a Maryland Limited Liability Company, Margaret, Margaret L. Harrison Holdings LLC, and Maryland, a Maryland Limited Liability Company, and Frola, Frola LLC, a Wyoming Limited Liability Company authorized to do business in the state of Maryland.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? We're going to remove the next ordinance for this evening, move on to new business. We have an introduction of the ordinance, purchase of Wakefield Road property.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance for the acquisition and settlement of multiple parcels of property totaling one-point-six-five acres and currently owned by Calvary Grace Brethren Church on the even side of the one-hundred block of Wakefield Road in Hagerstown, Maryland.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval of a resolution, approval of user agreement with Monocacy Aquatic Club for use of Potterfield Pool.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for the approval of a resolution to enter in, into a user agreement with the Monocacy Aquatic Club, MAC, for the use of the Potterfield Pool. The fee to the city of Hagerstown for the use of the pool will be three thousand dollars. The agreement shall be for one year beginning on June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, with the option for two additional one-year extensions. The user fee shall increase by two percent, two percent per season.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval of a resolution, approval of a user agreement with Hagerstown Fairgrounds Softball Association for use of City Park softball fields.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a long-term user agreement with the Hagerstown Fairgrounds Softball Association, Inc., for non-exclusive use of the City Park softball fields. The agreement shall be for twenty-three months, beginning on February first, two thousand twenty-three, with two additional renewal terms of two years each. The city shall charge no monetary rent for use of the premises.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? We'll be removing the next ordinance for this evening, moving on to approval of funding for municipal electric lobbyists.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council to approve a contribution amount of ten thousand from the Electric Fund to Eastern Utilities Commission toward their contract with Crest Hammond, Inc.
Second.
Second by Shelley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval of a lease holdover extension with Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation, Division of Occupational Health.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council approve the attached holdover extension letter with Maryland Department of General Services for lease at two-dash-six North Potomac Street in Hagerstown, Maryland.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval amendments to Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and city council to approve amendments to the FY twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for the following actions. Reallocation of three hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, CDBG. Funding from Alms House Rehabilitation Project is follows. Reallocate sixty thousand to the Single Family Emergency Repair Grant Program. Reallocate fifty thousand to accessibility ramps. Reallocate thirty thousand to Hagerstown Skate Park. Reallocate one hundred fifty thousand to improvements to Triangle North of Park Circle. Reallocate seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars to alleyway repaving. Increase funding maximum for individual emergency repair grant cases from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. Details of the CDBG amendments are attached.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval of Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant Application for Twenty-Five West Church Street Marketplace LLC.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant, Grant Application for the renovation project at Twenty-Five West Church Street with estimated total project costs of four hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Staff are authorized to issue a letter of commitment to Marketplace LLC for a grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the project completion deadline of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. No funds will be dispersed until staff have verified that all work in the development plan is completed to the city's satisfaction and the total project cost expenditure requirements have been met. Funding for this grant will come from the Invest Hagerstown line item in the Economic Redevelopment Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Approval of Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant Application for Thirty-four West Franklin Street, Klosner Business Services LLC.
Madam Mayor, hereby I move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached investment, invest, I'm sorry, Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant Application for the renovation project at Thirty-four West Franklin Street with estimated total project cost of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Staff are authorized to issue a letter of commitment to Klosner Business Services LLC for a grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand with the project completion deadline of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. No funds will be dispersed until staff have verified that all work in the development plan is completed to the city's satisfaction and the total project cost expenditure requirements have been met. Funding for this grant will come from the Invest Hagerstown line item and the Economic Redevelopment Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries? Approval of temporary overfill fire positions.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, hereby I move, move for mayor and council approval of one full-time firefighter position to be hired in an effort to save training costs and eliminate, eliminate a transition period where the next person retires, as it is expected for this to happen July first, two thousand twenty-three. This will allow for all new hires to begin training classes February sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Approval of this request will ensure that all will be available to be moved to shift work, minimum staffing positions in the shortest amount of time possible for trained firefighters.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Stop it.
All right. I'm ready for all the city administrators. Last motion carried.
So I want to, first off, I want to thank all the staff that attended Dan Annapolis last Wednesday. It was the eleventh year that economic development staff participated in, in Dan Annapolis. And the amount of good things we heard about the city and about all of you and about a lot of us were, were very encouraging and very appreciative and really look forward to, to hearing how the fruits of these visits end up paying off for us. So thank you all that, that attended and again, thank for the staff that went down with us. And apparently this is your last meeting, I heard somewhere. I just want to tell you on behalf of myself, and, and I know I speak for staff, it has been a true honor serving for you as mayor. And to commemorate that, you're going to have to take Mr. Stapp's picture and move it to the side. Thanks to Kathy Moore, who did this, and you have to open it now.
Okay. I don't even know how I'm going to be able to talk through this meeting. Oh, I love it.
Everybody else, everybody can see it later.
Let them all see it. Such a pass.
And good luck down in Annapolis. You're going to do great and we will continue on here. And I know with the leadership of this body and, and staff, only better things coming for the city of Hagerstown. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Alshire said he didn't want to go first, there's somebody else else to.
He says so. He says such good things, though.
Only I have to say is good luck, starting from all of your next adventure.
I will not. Councilmember for now.
So I'd like to go on record one more time to congratulate you and tell you how proud I am of you. And I'm looking forward to all the good work you're going to do for this state. And we, as a body and a city, will have to keep going and, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much for your leadership. And my prayer is that as you go into this transition, that you understand that you really, really are equipped to do it. Just hang in there, just always, always, always just remember how far you have come and know that there's so much further to go. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your friendship, and thank you for leading the way. Best is yet to come. Job well done.
Thank you.
Kristen, you want to do rock, paper, scissors? See, you did last.
You can do your last. I, I don't have any.
No, I'm just kidding. You didn't, I'll go.
I'm good.
What?
I'll go.
Do you want to do rock, paper, scissors?
No. I'm good, you can go last.
Just go.
I don't, I don't have any.
Oh, my God. Yeah, neither one of us, neither one of us have anything to say. Thank you.
First, a couple of things I want to get out of the way first. Just want to say thanks to Washington MedStar folks. My neighbor Eddie went through a good surgery today. He turned ninety-two yesterday. The second is I'd like to apologize to Nancy for last week. I think I expressed more frustrations about the MDE issue than, than, you know, I led on at the meeting and some other things that are going on with that entity. And so, you know, just wanting to see those projects get done and hopefully we can work through the issues associated with them. But I typically don't like to be that forward with staff. The last thing that I'll say is, if somebody, I ran into somebody the other day at Sam's and they were like, hey, you still on council? And I was like, yeah. And I started thinking about... And I started thinking about it, I was like, yeah, it's- it's been twenty-plus years. I thought, wow, you know, Emily's heading out, and you'd be the fifth mayor that I have had the honor to serve under. And I thought, man, if I could go back, what would I say to that young man, you know, sitting in this chair when I watched Mayor Brickner, you know, leave that first occasion? And I'd probably tell- tell him to not to aim so high and don't be so tenacious. But I think to you, I would say you have come a long way since your Redskins tailgating outfit. It's the first memory that I have. And the second is, obviously, thanks for stepping up on council. It has been awesome to sit beside you in that role. It's been awesome to serve under you as a council member, and watch your successes as mayor. And the third is, keep that fire, and don't ever apologize for it when you get down there.
Yes. Thank you.
So I just, before- before that, I say, good luck. The downtown Hagerstown crew that is doing the promotion on Facebook and Instagram and stories, hats off. I mean, there is no way that the people in this community don't know that there's things that are happening and great things are happening downtown, so whoever is behind the scenes doing that, it's just incredibly impressive, and I think that everyone is catching on to following those social media pages and really understanding that there's some great, great things that are happening, and you're a part of that.
Nope. Pretty sure, then two thousand and sixteen, when you decided to do this, that you were like, I'm gonna be loud. My goodness. Congratulations, because you are so loud. You have given the people in this community reason to believe that there- that things are possible. You've given little girls in our community reason to believe that sitting up here is okay, and that we can have a seat at the table. You're an incredible example for your daughter, for your friends, and my gosh, are you gonna kick ass down there? And we will try really hard to do everything that we can to keep everything that you've started going. Except the TikToks, because I'm not. There is no- there is no way that was happening. I am so proud to be able to have been serving alongside of you and under you in this administration, because it is a true honor, and you make all of us believe that anything is possible, so congratulations, sincerely. It doesn't feel real. Good luck. It doesn't. Thank you. You're welcome.
It's my turn. So actually, I have one order of business to go over before I just cry like a baby for the next ten minutes. I just wanted to give a huge thank you to the North American Rod and Gun Club, who raised money for HPD for K-9, and they presented a check last weekend, which unfortunately, I was not able to attend. They raised thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for our police department to be able to get a new K-9. So thank you very much to Tim Gargana and everyone else that was involved in that. It's a huge help to us, something that we didn't have a budget for, and something that we always need, so thank you very much. I don't even know where to start. I just want to, I guess, start and thank city staff, who's been so kind to me, and I know I got to thank you in private, but I just hope the citizens of Hagerstown know how lucky we are to have the team that we have that works hard for this city. And I know before I came into public office, I would have had no idea the amount of work that it takes to make this place run, and I just thank each and every one of you for working with us, for teaching us, for guiding us, for teaching me things I would have never thought about knowing, I never thought I would tour wastewater plants in my life, just experiences that are really cool and I will cherish forever. Scott, when I was in Annapolis, one of the delegates said to me, he said, is this gonna be your legacy? And he was talking about the fieldhouse, and I just have, over the last couple of days, been thinking like, what am I most proud of? And there are lots of things I'm most proud of, but I have to say, being on the team that hired you to be city administrator is definitely one of them. You have done a tremendous job, and the city is lucky to have you, so thank you for being my friend and my neighbor and the city administrator, and now you get to be my friend and neighbor still. To my- my family that's here today, Terry and Jess, I thank you guys for coming. We have such a special relationship, and I don't think a lot of people know how deep that runs. I wouldn't be able to do what I do if it wasn't for you two. And I'll never forget about a year ago, there was another potential opportunity for me that didn't pan out, and I went and sat at your dining room table, and I said, I may have this really cool opportunity, that's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and I don't think I'm gonna take it. And Terry, you looked at me and told me I was crazy, and you said you would absolutely take it, and we will figure it out. And I'm just eternally grateful for both of you. I know, I love you too. I can't look at her right now. Mom and Dad. Mom and Dad, thank you, just- just for having my back and for always supporting me. I know I said this in the press conference, but I meant it for always making me feel like my dreams were never too big, and for letting me be the weirdo fourteen-year-old girl who shaved her head and dyed it pink, and for just letting me be me. And I wish I could look back on that fourteen-year-old girl and tell her that her and all her tattoos and all her weirdness that didn't want to fit in did it her way, and I wouldn't have been able to do it my way if I didn't have you guys' support, and I appreciate that. Star. Thanks for boxing up my office and crying on the floor with me last night. I appreciate it. Thanks for sitting in the clock tower and watching me cry and take eight-thousand selfies and document every single last moment, like my last pulling in the parking lot, and my last time looking at this, and my last time getting off the elevator. Thank you for tolerating me. I know, I still have to shut the garage door for the last time, and I've already thought about it. And Leila, too, thanks for being here. I know this is the most fun thing you've done all week. You know, you raised me, too. I had you young. I didn't know where my life would take me, and everything I've ever done has been for you, and I know this hasn't been easy. I know it's- it hasn't been easy for you, watching me in public office since you've been eight years old. I know it's not easy having your friends screenshot me and things people say about me and send them to you. I know it's not easy with me traveling, and this is a really scary time, I think, for both of us, but I'm really, really proud of you and the person you've become, and I appreciate your support in the way that you've loved me, and you've attended all these events even when I knew you didn't want to, and you've supported me. And the other day, you told me you were proud of me when I announced that this was happening, and that meant the world to me, and I love you more than anything in the world.
Did you say that when you put her in that outfit, though?
I don't think she loved me that much that night at the park, when she was in that outfit, but she was a good sport about it. But I- I meant it when I said, if you ever feel like you don't have a seat at the table, then you build your own. All right. Getting it together, are you ready? Kristen, I think you're probably the most brilliant person I've ever met, and I mean that, and it's been an honor and a privilege to get to know you over the last several years. You were most of the time my favorite phone call of the week, passing ideas back and forth, and sometimes commiserating about things happening in the city, but I appreciate your friendship. I admire you as a person, as a father, I- I- the offer stands that you and Tenille can adopt me and Leila, because we would like to do all the fun outdoor things that you do, but I am- I'm thankful for your friendship. And this is all your fault, Bob, you know that, right? This is all your fault, because at the end of two thousand and fifteen, I'll never forget this, and I'm gonna tell this story, you worked for Hagerstown Sons at the time, you came into my Farmers Insurance Office, and you sat down, and you said, I'm gonna run for mayor, and I'm gonna win, and I need smart people in the council, and I think you should run, too. And I don't know if you- what, we could go back seven or eight years and change that, but I'm glad- I'm glad that you did, and I appreciate all of your guidance, and that we have agreed to disagree so many times, but have never been disagreeable, and I appreciate that. Hi. It's me. Tiara, it's been an honor, watching you run for office. I- I just was so proud of you and the campaign that you ran, and, you know, you had a problem with something, and you spoke out, and then you said, you know what, I'm not gonna sit on the sidelines, I'm gonna go do something about it, and I have always admired that about you. It's been a true honor, I'm so happy I can call you a friend, and my mafioso over here. I really do love you and appreciate you, and the city is lucky to have you here. Tekeisha, we're like the odd couple, right? I don't know if, if four years ago, you and I would have thought we'd be sitting up here together and have the level of friendship that we have, but you have been my rock, you really have, and my friend, and my early morning call, and my late-night call, and person I know I can call and just say, I just need a break, I just need a break, and you're always there. I appreciate that, and the city is lucky to have you, too, watching you work and learn and just be out in the community and making connections that I don't think we've ever made before is beautiful. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your friendship. And Shelley, you already made me cry. You know- you know, I love you more than anything. Thank you for letting me FaceTime you seven-hundred times a day, especially when I'm really frustrated, and I just sit the phone on the counter, and I'm like, I'm just gonna sit here and talk to you for a little bit. But you've been such a tremendous asset to the city and such a great partner to have on council, more importantly than that, you've been such a good friend to me, and I- I thank you so much. It's been a true honor to serve with you and watch all your projects come to light, and please keep them all going. And I guess this is the last time I get to sit up here.
You get to picture Storm as the last sign of it?
Yeah. Did I get one? There'll be one of those, too. To the- the citizens of Hagerstown, it's truly been an honor. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your mayor, and the support that I've gotten from the city and the citizens has been tremendous, and I've gotten to do really, really cool things, talking to kids. Just last night, I presented a trophy to South High's wrestling team, and the coach told me afterwards how excited they were to have a picture with the mayor. Later that night, I got to talk to about fourteen boys in a Boy Scout group, and they asked just such thoughtful questions about what it was like being a woman in office and- and what it's like being in government, and I will miss that for sure. Obviously, this is the opportunity of a lifetime, but I believe in this city, I will always believe in this city, and my hope is that moving forward, the city starts to believe in itself, because we really have just so many tremendous things here and so many good projects going on, and we're better than the naysayers on social media. We are, this city is better than the people who talk badly about it, and I hope, moving forward, that we continue to come together and- and be a more positive voice over those loud negative voices, because Hagerstown deserves all of the great things. It does, and I'll be watching from a different role as a citizen from Summit Avenue, so thank you for all of the people who voted and believed in me. Thank you for those that didn't. I hope I was able to do some things that impressed you at least a little bit, and it's been a true honor. So it is eight oh one, and I'm going to officially adjourn my last meeting. Thank you, guys.